Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. I am Councilwoman Barb Warwick and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure. For this hearing, we will be hearing from the Department of Public Works, including the Administration, Environmental Services, Facilities, Operations, and Capital Projects. So if our Public Works team would like to come up to the table. And while you're joining us, I will ask that our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, give a brief overview. Oh, let me just see, are we joined by other members?
No.
Not yet, okay, but I think they'll be coming soon, so.
Wrap around if you need to.
Yeah, so go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burson. The mission of the Department of Public Works is to maintain the city's assets related to accessing public streets, parks, facilities, rehabilitating public structures, and maintaining the city's natural environment, provide support to other departments, administer a solid waste and recycling system that promotes a litter-free environment, and ensure public safety responding to weather-related events. Public Works is divided into the following bureaus: the Administration Bureau, the Bureau of Operations, Environmental Services, and Facilities. Starting with the Bureau of Administration, there is a total of 28 full-time positions coming out of the General Fund, that is three less than from 2025. Overall, that's a decrease of about $127,000. A summary of non-personnel changes for the Bureau of Administration: overall, there is a $4.8 million increase in non-personnel expenses. Most of that is for property services. There's a small increase to the electric line and a small increase to the water line. We've talked about those extensively. I feel like we may talk about those a little bit more today. For the Bureau of Operations, there is a total of 287 full-time positions. That is one more than in 2025. That is a Neighborhood Engagement Coordinator that is being moved over from the Mayor's Office. For Operations, a summary of non-personnel changes: overall, there is a $502,000 increase in non-personnel expenses. Bureau of Environmental Services, there is 202 positions, which is one less from 2025. For non-personnel changes for Environmental Services, there's about $50,000 increase in non-personnel expenses. Most of that is for professional services, an increase for Clean Pittsburgh Funding that was moved from the Bureau of Operations. And the Bureau of Facilities, there is 86 total full-time positions in the General Fund. That is two less than in 2025. And for a summary of non-personnel changes, overall, there's a $106,000 decrease in non-personnel expenses outlined for you there. And in the capital budget, DPW has a lot of capital projects, anything that has to do with park reconstruction or facility improvements, they are all listed out there for you. And they have a handful of trust funds that they have access to. So everything we've talked about so far is just general fund allocations, but they also have the Parks Tax Trust Fund, the Liquid Fuels Tax Trust Fund, Regional Asset District Trust Fund, Public Works Trust Fund, and the Shade Tree Trust Fund. And they have a number of fees that they oversee and administer that are outlined for you there. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. So yeah, if you'd all like to introduce yourselves and then Director, I'll let you, however you want to proceed with the presentation, if you want to take it piece, you know, piecemeal or do it all at once.
Okay.
Up to you.
All right. Yeah, thank you so much. Chris Hornstein, Director of Public Works, just asking my team to introduce themselves.
Bill Crane, Deputy Director of Public Works.
Marcel Newman, Assistant Director of Public Works.
Chuck Boucher, Manager of Support Services.
Don Mudrick, Manager of Personnel and Finance for Public Works.
Apologies, I had a vacation planned down to North Carolina this week, so I'm joining remotely, but this is Chip Gall, I'm Assistant Director of Public Works, Bureau of Facilities.
Thank you, everybody. I do have a presentation, I'm going to share that via Zoom right now, hopefully folks can see. So this is our Council Budget Hearing Presentation. In the presentation, what we're going to discuss, one, I'd like to do the year 2025 in review, you know, probably take a pause to see if council has any questions regarding the 2025 year in review, and then looking forward to 2026 as well. So the first topic I'd like to broach, the, what we like to call, or what I kind of call the mighty wind, so the storm in May. You know, you see some pictures here from the field, you know, a substantial amount of damage. You know, this was an all-hands-on-deck situation. You would find that the department was impacted for this cleanup long after the initial events, as you'll see. And so, Bill, I was hoping you could talk to us a little bit about, you know, some of our learnings that we have coming out of this storm.
Sure, Director, thank you, and thank you for having us, Councilwoman. Yes, we dealt with the mighty wind, which was April 29th, actually. And we went well into May, cleaning up the whole month of May, kind of catching up, and all the while doing what we always do is patch potholes and sweep streets and empty litter cans. But one of the things we did do is we put together a chipping crew with a rental chipper that went, was more mobile than just going with a front loader and loading the back of dump trucks and a bunch of guys with rakes and shovels. We could, we could reduce the pile of debris into the back of a truck and go right, right to the dump, go right to Heffs Run or to a division and put it in the yard waste. Now, one of the things we did deal with were delays because of electric wires, or wires in general. And our folks really not knowing what a telephone wire or a cable wire is, we're not trained in all that. With the assistance of the Fire Bureau, we had a fire stick, a crew came along with a fire stick, so when we had a pile of debris wrapped in wires, they could tell if these wires were in fact energized. So rather than just us taping it off and moving on, waiting for Duquesne Light, we could actually know that it's safe to work there, and we would ship the pile away and move on.
And so you see here some of the incurred costs, you know, we ultimately ended up having about 521 tasks and a total of about 9,000, over 9,000 labor hours is just associated with this cleanup. Just to kind of give you some perspective, that's the equivalent to about 57 people working eight hours a day for four weeks straight. So this was like a monthly occurrence, and it wasn't all hands-on-deck situation for the department. All aspects of the department were involved in the cleanup, whether it be facilities responding to electrical power outages, or, you know, roof issues related to the storm, whether it be our streets maintenance or parks maintenance, folks, Forestry Division, you know, rapidly responding to situations in the right-of-way in our parks and elsewhere, or even, you know, Environmental Services who, you know, helped us manage a collection of the wood waste so we could cleanly get it off of city property and recycle it as appropriate. What you'll find is, in some of our analysis, that, you know, the rough estimate of this total impact is going to be about $1 million. You know, we spent an additional $102,000 for wood waste and recycling services. We had contractors helping us remove trees, and then we had the direct labor and equipment, and then also, you know, the additional, you know, overtime due to this, you know, public safety event. And so, again, all hands on deck, really proud of the learnings that the staff had, that we were able to, you know, create new techniques to help us deal with this, to provide some relief to residents, very appreciative of our partnership with the Fire Bureau to help keep our folks safe while working. And so, you know, just again, one highlight of the year in 2025 that we wanted to discuss. In 2024, when we came to this table for a budget hearing, we said if we had the personnel and the trucks, we would do recycling in Oakland as a pilot program. So we do have the people, but unfortunately, we do not have the necessary equipment. So over the course of this year, there were over 12 working days where we started a plus, a truck short in recycling and refuse to fill routes. And we've had well over 90 days where we're literally starting two-plus trucks shorts. So our current Environmental Services fleet status as of today, we've got 10 trucks currently in the shop for longer than two days, and there are 27 trucks that are currently overdue for preventative maintenance. What we know, what we experience, is that every time that we defer maintenance on an asset, whether it be a truck, a facility, a bridge, what have you, you are going to be incurring additional costs and downtime of that asset in the near future. This just holds true. Nope, sorry, went backwards. And Operations, Bill, I didn't know if you just want to talk a little bit about potholes?
Sure, Director. Yes, I'll speak to some potholes. Using Mobility's paving schedule, it enabled us to tailor our work more effectively. We would look at their paving schedule and look at our 3-1-1 requests, and obviously, if the street's going to be resurfaced in a short time, we would not waste a lot of men and machine on that street. And a concentration of 3-1-1s let us see that, that we would not waste all that material and wait for resurfacing to happen. Obviously, if there was a danger, we would go in and patch it up. And but also, let me point out that that one slide has them working in South Side Riverfront Parks, so we're not always working in the street right-of-way. The lower slide, you can see the guys patching in the street, but we do a lot of work for parks and facilities, parking lots, and police stations, and, you know, Zone 5 is always in need of help, but we do a lot of other things with our asphalt crews.
Yeah, and I think I want to point out, too, that, you know, from our perspective, Mobility and Infrastructure really did a fantastic job of adhering to the published schedule, which again, makes our work a lot easier, because we can have confidence that there's not going to be a last-minute change to the paving schedule that either might necessitate a pothole that may have been lingering on, or conversely, leg wasted Talking briefly about our Clean and Lean Program, this year, we accomplished 437 properties that were cleaned since 2023. This is almost a 400% increase in work. You know, we have, that does necessitate an increase in total cost and labor and equipment used, but we, you know, we see like a subsequent decrease in the cost per property. To do this work, this is all done without the investment in any equipment, so this is really just a credit to everyone frontline up through management to really trying to figure out the way to maximize the potential here of this program. As we continue on, we continue to work with our partners in the Department of Finance, in PLI, and even those folks in the Land Bank to make sure that we are, you know, being as responsive as possible with the resources that we do have. Marcel, if you wouldn't mind talking a little bit about environmental enforcement?
Sure. This year, we onboarded 10 full-time environmental enforcement inspectors, and we set it up so that there is one for each magistrate, magistrate area or district. So what we're learning is that proactive enforcement keeps the city cleaner, and most violations are behavioral, and abatement continues to be the desired outcome here. We've seen about 90% abatement with few going all the way to court due to public education and awareness of expectations. This is all since we've onboarded them in September. We've had about 1,487 inspections in October 2024 versus 5,072 inspections in October 2025. This is just to show you the difference having those eight new inspectors onboard. The difference is also being noticed by a lot of positive feedback from our council members, from constituents, and 3-1-1. We also started the process of taking over the weed and debris from PLI. We expect to have full completion by second quarter of 2026.
And with vehicle statics, I was hoping, Chuck, that you could speak to this?
On our snow fleet?
Yeah, and, and street sweepers and small garbage trucks.
Okay. Our street sweep, our street sweepers are getting aged, and we are about to lease five new ones. They should be in roughly before the draft. We have a few 2010s that we are definitely going to replace. They're old, they're costing us more and more money each year to maintain those and to keep up our sweeping program. We needed to move forward with the lease. And also, with our snow fleet, our trucks are aging, and we need to complement our fleet more and more each year. We're, we are probably able to get out for a snowstorm roughly around 55 trucks and still have some extras in case some do break down, which we will have breakdowns throughout the whole winter. Hopefully, they won't decommission the trucks because of the age of them.
And I think with, just make a note on the small garbage trucks, sometimes called the pup truck or the rat packer, you know, this is what we use to service litter cans in parks and the streets. You know, we found that this vehicle type is just absolutely critical for keeping employee injury low, because those folks, you know, our only other alternative if the truck is not available is to use a one-ton pickup truck, in which case, you know, the employee would have to lift the garbage above their shoulder in order to move it from the street. And so, it's just a more effective way of performing that work. I do have to kind of underscore that, you know, we have eight street sweepers in total, four currently in service. You know, I've heard from council members and the public that, you know, there's been a lot of concern and questions around the street sweeping program and our ability to service, however, just want to underscore that, you know, one of the reasons why we've been delayed in service is just the, you know, the necessary equipment not available. And so we look at the, the long-term lease of the five new sweepers as being critical for continued operations of a program that I think the public very much appreciates when performed.
Sorry to interrupt, did you, did you send us the PowerPoint?
More than on it.
Oh, okay, thanks, babe, sorry.
Sorry. Chip, I didn't know if you wanted to walk through, you know, some of our capital work this year.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. So the next three slides show pictures of the highlights of 2025 in terms of project delivery, so that's Humwood Park, Medic 4, and Oliver Bath House. However, I do want to be clear, these aren't the only projects we have delivered to completion this year. Across our project teams, we've reached the finish line with 22 deliverables in 2025, and we've advanced another 28 projects to new major milestones, meaning that they've either moved from initial concept to design development, or from design to construction. And when I'm referring to these projects, the majority of them are in the capital budget. Some of them, several of them are funded with operating funds as well, but still constitute major investments in our assets and parks. But chose these projects, these three projects to highlight, because they represent not only the professionalism of our staff and our contractors, but the ambition of our capital program. Humwood is the largest park reconstruction project we've taken on, at least in our memory. You can see a photo from our soft opening this fall at the football field, which is the main feature of the project, newly renovated, but you can see in the rendering there as well, an additional space for parking, a new pool, and a field concession stand, new playground, and amphitheater, and lawn as well. So really proud of that project and excited to bring that one home. We discussed earlier in the year at our public presentation, Medic 4, on our next slide, is setting a new standard for building and energy performance. This project incorporated Passa House Design and is compliant with net zero standards. And then with Oliver Bath House, it really speaks for itself in terms of just the beauty of that building and the historical significance, and the memories shared that we've heard over the course of this project from generations. So the bath house is substantially complete. We are just making some final fixes to the pool deck surface for safety purposes, but we do still aim to open by year's end. So again, we deliver and advance dozens of projects every year, so just a big thank you to our senior staff and our project managers.
I want to speak a little bit on the topic of safety. The top chart that you can see is what the city tracks as its overall DART weight, citywide for all employees. You'll note the orange trend line, which is mostly flat, I would, I would point out. However, in Public Works, we've seen a descending trend line even from our 2020 numbers. In 2022 is when we instituted the real-time safety system. You know, again, for the public and for councils edification, DART does stand for Days Absent Restricted or Transferred, so we do, you know, get this data cleaned and reviewed by HR. And so, you know, we've seen substantial improvement in that, and there's lots of learnings here that we've been applying department-wide. When we go just into this year, just a couple of points that I want to make. So in general, the reporting of incidents in the system in real time has led to numerous safety improvements. I could probably have a whole presentation just on, on those. That's led us to develop application of standard work procedures, which have also helped us to reduce incidents, and we're currently addressing issues around enhancing our armboarding of new employees, as well as creating additional managerial tools that put frontline employees in the best possible position to succeed safely. I want to highlight two events of the year. The first one, in January, we had record-low employee injuries in January despite having 12 days of snowfall. In the past, injuries would have pretty cleanly tracked with snowfall, but through the dedicated work of all the people here at this table, as well as our superintendents, assistant superintendents across bureaus, we were able to greatly reduce employee injury in the month of January. Conversely, June and July, you will note this large uptick, this is when we began having a large amounts of trucks, six, eight, 10 trucks unavailable in Environmental Services. This was forcing extended work in the hottest temperatures, and then were subsequently contributing to an increase in injuries in that workforce. So two polar events of things that we're learning from in the safety realm. And with that, that is 2025. I didn't know if any council persons had any questions on the year that passed. Okay, very good. Looking forward to 2026, I think important to note with snow ops, again, I'm just reiterating our snowboard, at this point last year, we were slightly worse off with trucks than we are currently. However, so I do want to give credit to our vendors who are working diligently to try to give us every piece of equipment that we possibly can. But it would be incorrect to say that we are not vehicle-challenged. Even though we are vehicle-challenged, we are still looking to create tools to help us understand our salt usage and our work in real time. So what you see is a snapshot of our salt tool that we are currently developing and going to deploy for this winter. This allows us to see the loading of salt in real time, as well as the receiving of salt from our vendor, American Rock Salt. What this allows us to do is to better understand in real time when we need salt, where we need salt, how is salt being used, is it being used effectively, and really kind of create a tool that was previously just existed on paper and would come to us not in real time, but often well after the fact. So we're excited about that. We acknowledge that we're vehicle-challenged, but, you know, we're still trying to figure out ways to make our service as effective as possible for residents. Just to point out, our cleanliness, you know, again, we have five street sweepers coming online early 2026. We are taking particular extra focus on cleanliness, leading up to during and after the NFL Draft. We view the draft as one of those generational events for the city, and we're hopeful that we can create great work practices that will extend well beyond its, the event itself. Some partnerships of focus for us when it comes to cleanliness, Allegheny Cleanways, we've already kind of discussed at this table, you know, the camera rendering, but we're always super appreciative of their partnership. And then, you know, again, we're going to continue and ramp up our volunteer events in 2026. We had over 300 in 2025 and over 5,000 volunteers, so we're always looking for different creative ways to expand that program as well. You know, we, we try to make learning and stability a center point of our work here in Public Works. So just a couple of things that I want to highlight that we're looking at for 2026. Vehicle maintenance, we are going to be taking a deep dive into our own practices regarding vehicle maintenance. You know, we need to do everything we can in Public Works to keep our vehicles on the road more consistently. You know, we understand we've been at this table, you know, requesting vehicles, but we also realize the, you know, fiscal position of the city, and that doesn't exclude us from doing everything that we can to make sure that our vehicles are in the best possible shape and cared for in the best possible way. When we look at revenue and spend, we are looking to get real-time information in the hands of our middle department leadership. This just allows them to make better decision-making and adjustments, you know, as they encounter problems in the course of their work. In project delivery, we're going to continue focusing on those elements that delay or negatively impact project delivery, specifically vendor performance review and standard specifications, which, you know, I guess not necessarily sexy for the public to understand or know, but like are absolutely critical for us to have success in project delivery. And with that, we do have some concerns over the budget, so I wanted to invite Don to speak on behalf of our electricity utility.
All right. It's been a hot topic lately, right, utilities? I just wanted to make a little bit of a point with the graph we're seeing here.
Sorry, let me, I just wanted to say Councilman Charlin and Councilwoman Gross are at the table, just for anyone listening online. Go ahead, sorry.
Thanks, that's okay. Right, so what we're seeing here on this chart basically is simply the utility spend over the past, since 2012, and the utility, the electric line since 2012, and the electric budget since 2012. The red line you're looking at there is the trend of the budget, and the blue line you're looking at is the trend of the spend. So what we're looking at is utilities have been, electric has been in a deficit for quite a while. I personally am asking, I'm putting the 2026 electric number at 8.2 million. If you could forward to the next screen, one after that, go to the next one, please. I want the year-over-year, sorry. Okay, so what we're looking at now on this, on this kind of like appendix pages, there is good news to the electric that I do want to share, all right? Oh, is that not?
Yeah, it's a, it's a.
It's a, okay. So we'll get, we'll get these to you so you have it in person, but basically what we're looking at here is, 2021 is when we engaged in the new energy procurement model that we're now coming to you guys with, with the. procurement model that we're now coming to you guys with, with the NLX contracts, where we were just going to open market prior to 2021. And then 2021 is when WEPIC really stepped up and created, kind of put a purchasing package together as a whole. And what you're actually seeing there is the trend of us mitigating, at least, I mean, utilities are going to increase regardless, but what you're seeing there is us actually mitigating that increase. So pretty notably from 2022 to, or 2023 to 2024, we saw a 16% actually, like less than a 1% increase year over year. And then going from 24 to 25, we saw a 5% increase. Compared to previous, we were seeing 13, 15, 19% increases year over year. So that's good news economically, right? We're mitigating the issue there. We're also coming together with some marketing tools, much like we have climate action days. The planning office and DPW have been working very closely on this to create like electric action days, you know, in the summer. Maybe we don't work with the lights on in the office because, or maybe a lamp, right? Like, because the driver, right, of our electric bill is usage. We're consumers, right? When, when we think about utilities, it's not just a bill and a service. We're consuming whatever we pay, right? So the less we consume, obviously the less our bills. If you go back, Chris, now please to the previous slide. There we go. So as we've been talking about, as I, as we come to the table with these NL contracts, there are two players in the electric game. There's the Duquesne Light, who is our transmitter, and then there's Direct Energy, who is our supplier. And as you can see, even in this chart, our supplier side, we're doing good, right? The, the transmission side, the Duquesne Light side, that is volatile. You know, it changes based on the market. In reality, the reason in the past we were seeing these 13, 15%, 19% year-over-year increases is the utility market is a minute-by-minute dynamic pricing, much like we tried to do with parking in Oakland, right? Depending on the time. So when you turn your lamp on at 10:00 AM in CCB, it actually costs us more than if you turn that same lamp on at 5:00 AM because of peak times and peak usages. So we were able to mitigate some of that through the purchasing model we're in now, which is why you're seeing those year-over-year costs kind of reduce and stabilize as year-over-year increases. So while we are in, while we need money to pay the bills, right? Budgetarily, we are in a hole. The good news is we are actively working to reduce the out years. And we'll start seeing the true effect of this work probably within the next couple out years, right? As the market catches up. And our current projections for next year, like I said, I'm asking for eight point, I would say the number now is 8.2 million based on feedback I'm getting from planning, from WEPIC, from, you know, Bloomberg Trends and all that kind of stuff. Utilities as a whole, as we know, like, you know, I know water's been a big discussion and we can, there's been lots of discussions about that. I wasn't going to dive into it completely here because there's a lot to talk about. It would take a while, but that's it. The other things I really want to note is, you know, I've heard in discussions in the, in the budget hearing so far, the questions of what departments are obligated to pay and what is kind of like discretionary. So I just want to throw out there that in 2025, close to 10 million of our total budget for the department was actually unfunded mandates, basically, right? Like contracts, rents, CBA obligations. So 30% of our budget every year is locked, spent before we even start, right? So that's something to consider and that's what adds to the hole in DPW. So, you know, for every hundred dollars you're giving us, we can only actually spend 70 on productivity and on the work, right? So I just want to point that out as well. You know, just while I have the mic, just real quick, I just have, you know, I like to give shout outs, you know? The controller's office has obviously been a fantastic partner this year. The planning office is a fantastic partner with us this year getting this stuff. But I want to thank my team. You know, we've completely automated our service and that's happened because of a great team led by Adam Nye, who's actually in the off, in the audience here with us watching. So I just need to really give him props. My accounting team, Judy Palmieri, who's my lead accountant, just doing initial auditing, saved over $40,000 a year off our uniform bill. And that's just an initial audit. You know, so teams doing in place, unfortunately, these things take time to realize, right? We're going to see it next year. We're going to definitely see it in 27, 28. But I just want to say good work to all the team because we are the biggest purchaser in the city. We don't have the biggest, we don't have the biggest budget, but we're the biggest purchaser of actually purchasing transactions, right? And the number of them. So it's a lot to do and they do a great job. And that's it.
Thank you, Dawn. Chip, I was hoping you could speak to concerns that we have of our roofs and mechanical systems.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. So the takeaway from this slide here is that we are not investing our facilities in specifically roofs and mechanical systems at the level necessary to sustain and maintain them. And that deferred maintenance will generate greater costs and disruptions to city operations when push comes to shove and these systems fail. It's basically the same story as with our vehicles. There are numerous facilities that are failing in terms of the roofs or, or major HVAC systems. Usually that's, when I say HVAC systems, it's usually boilers, but it, it could be rooftop conditioning units as well or their components. And I just, just want to be clear to council that we have the contracts and the staffing and the programming and expertise in place to execute on this. We just don't have the funding. And in past years, we've requested funds in our operating budget and we did that again this year, but this year we also asked for those funds in the capital budget. These similar kind, these expenses and similar kinds of expenses or investments have been considered capital expenses before. So we figured, you know, why, why not, why not at least increase our chances of getting some of these funded? So between roofs and HVAC systems that are currently in critical and are failing condition that we could program for on a, on a year-by-year basis, we were asking for a low over four and a half million shown there on this slide. And thus far, we've not been funded for any of them. So, you know, that, that puts us in a difficult position where we cannot plan or program any system replacements and we're forced to wait until something fails. And that's, that's the position we've been in this year and that's the position the current budget will put us in for next year. And that's all I have to add for that. But Chris, I don't know if you have anything else to elaborate?
Yeah, I mean, I think you can actually see in our current portfolio of projects that we're working on, you know, the absolute expense that comes from deferred maintenance. Projects like Oliver Bathhouse is the direct result of deferred maintenance. We have such a massive investment required just to make that building safe for public use because of deferred maintenance. The same with Medic Four. It is the same thing. It was in a state and condition that forced a decision as to whether we rehabilitate or reconstruct. In that case, I would still stand by the decision that reconstruction was the more viable option. Alternatively, Fire Station Eight currently under construction, so deteriorated in condition that we actually had to remove the host tower from the building several years ago to keep it occupiable for firefighters. So while we planned this work that we're doing right now. So those things come with tremendous cost and impact to city services. And so as Chip mentioned, you know, 2024, we feel like we were facing a deferred maintenance cycle again in 2025. If it continues on, the outcome of that is, you know, facilities that you're going to seek, you know, you know, we're going to be very expensive repairs. Complete guts and rehabilitation will be required. So again, we're just raising the flag as a point of concern, as with any asset. When you defer maintenance, you ultimately will end up paying for it. And with that, that is our presentation. I wanted to invite council to have questions substantive discussion.
Great, thank you. I'll start, Councilman Charlin.
You know, I see Councilwoman Gross over there with, do you want to go first? Go for it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Councilman Charlin. So I have, I just, let's just start where we, you just ended so that I am understanding the slide that I have in my hand that's on the screen. Roofs in failing conditions, seven recreation facilities and three fire stations and one EMS station and three maintenance divisions. And then HVAC systems in critical failing conditions, seven recreation centers. Are those the same seven centers? I don't think they are. I feel like it's some of the same centers as failing roofs and maybe some other ones. And then there's like EMS headquarters and three maintenance divisions. Like if I were to say like total number of facilities that either need a roof or HVAC or it's more than, like how many is it?
Chip, can you answer that?
Yeah, I'd have to compare the list to see which ones are overlap, but most of like the three maintenance divisions that need a roof are different than the ones that need a new boiler. Most of them are not overlap. So whatever the subtotal of these.
All right, I'm going to say then, yeah, one of the, one of the bullets is 14 facilities.
Right, we're certainly behind the curve.
Okay, so somewhere between 15 and 20 facilities need either a roof or HVAC and that totals 4.7 million that is not funded in this budget in front of us.
Correct.
Okay. And then I also heard the, the electric bill is under budgeted by, was that another 4 million?
Uh, no, this year they have it at.
2026?
Six. I'm glad I don't remember the number off the top of my.
I feel like it was maybe in the bar chart and I was trying to figure it out.
It should be 8.2 is what I'm, what I'm saying right now. They, they have 2026 at 6.9 maybe.
So it's 1.3?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a 4.7 and a 1.3. So that's getting us up to 6 million.
Yeah.
That I'm going to have to then maybe not write the second, but then go back to the controller and our budget office and ask, in the 30 million that you thought it was under budget already, do we have to add another six from DPW for just electric and roofs?
Yeah, and actually water, that was something that hadn't really occurred.
I'm going to get there.
Yeah, so maybe.
I'm going to get there, okay. So we, you may or may not have seen that we have, just had a long discussion, standing committee with PWSA. And one of the things I asked them for was, and wants to make sure that the public hears loudly, this is like the third time this week I'm saying it, that like since the late 1800s, we, our water bill was $0 per year.
Correct.
And this year in 2025, we have a $13 million water bill that we haven't paid yet. And then next year in 2026, it's projected to be, I think in this budget, $10 million. And then we were just told again, just about an hour or two ago, that all of the, that bill is being determined by some old meters at city facilities and some new metering that's taken a few years to put into place, which is fine. I've been a favorite metering for a long time, but the PUC is forcing us to pay that water bill to PWSA. So I was told by PWSA here in this room a little bit ago that, you know, that bill is sent to DPW. So do you all have some itemized bill or 100 different bills or 400 different bills? Like what, what's happening with that?
So it's a concern that PWSA is unable to do consolidated billing, meaning we can't have parent accounts. So however many meters there are of water in the city, that's how many bills we're receiving. Those bills come from a third-party printer, right? They literally come in two envelopes a month this thick that we have to sort through, separate them out to pay them. So it's, it's concerning. And to your point, I'm just, because, you know, this predates all of us, mostly at this table anyway. But we went, as your point, we went from zero to hero, zero to 100 with no administrative ramp up. You just, we just threw 1,000 invoices at us and said, pay it, while there was some kind of discussion of true ups or whatever, right, was happening. So this 5.2 million or whatever is going around, it's a spreadsheet that I could try to match up, but to be fair and quite honest and blunt, as the person, as the accountant paying the bills, I reserve the right to audit them, no matter what they are, even if they're a utility or, or whatever. So we need to be ready to do that and we're, we're not there. We're getting there, we're close, right? We're going to go through the same exercise we went through with electric now with water and my friends at the, at Pittsburgh Water are gonna, we're going to become good friends, right? Because we can't, I mean, I haven't even spoken to anyone at Pittsburgh Water.
Okay, well, I'm going to say the same thing I just did a short while ago in this room, which is that, you know, some of us lived through them sending out thousands of incorrect bills.
Correct.
I had constituents who lived alone, who, you know, had been regularly paying like less than a hundred dollars a month, who've got 1,500 dollar bills.
Right.
And then they were forced to have a plumber come out to their house to look for leaks. There was no leak. The bill was wrong.
Right.
We had an entire post agenda about this and the only employee who was in charge of PWSA sat at this table and lied to us, right? And we sued them over it and we got rid of them about it. Their smart meters were wrong. There are lawsuits in other cities about this. So I do think it's important that we be vigilant and not just maybe look at the total, but also like on the ground, right? Like, hey, if there's no leak at this facility, and in fact, it's been closed for 10 years and no one's actually been in it, but there's still like, you know, multi-thousand dollar water bill. That's a problem. I have a constituent who's been billed and canceled their, their building because the commercial line that there's photo records of that was cut off before he acquired the building decades ago, when it had been a commercial laundromat in like the 1980s. PWSA is still billing it. He, he runs water on a residential line into the same building. And has been there for decades using only that residential line. And it's been, you know, a 10-year fight to get PWSA to stop sending him a bill for a commercial line that he never used. It's clearly sawed off in the basement of the, of the place.
To commiserate with you, if you don't mind, you know, one other thing I would just say, not to beat up on our friends at Pittsburgh Water, because obviously we've been colleagues for years, right? Like we, we know everyone over there. But we as their largest customer, like I don't know if we are for Duquesne Light, but we are for Pittsburgh Water, calls customer service. I can't even have a dedicated rep.
You don't have an accounting department liaison?
We call and.
You're going to the regular customer service line?
Yes, ma'am.
Duly noted.
Thanks.
Maybe we can put that in the bill of sale.
You know.
So.
But to be fair, I've never had the conversation with them to ask either, but you know, it would be nice to not. Our, our team member calls them. Our, our team member calls them weekly, right? It would be nice to not have to.
Got it. Um, feel free to call the council, city council, because we do have one seat on the board. People used to call me nonstop when I sat on the board, so there's that. Um, so. We don't know really, there's no true up yet of what the bill for this year for PWSA that's thirteen million or the projection for next year's budget that's ten million, whether it's actually gonna be more than that or less than that, or we, we haven't really started.
I wouldn't begin to talk about.
Like, are these bills right? Let's go around to how many, how many bills is it that you're getting?
So I had asked Katia and.
Give me the ballpark again.
Five, six hundred bills a month.
Five or six hundred, okay. I asked PWSA earlier today if it was like one hundred or four hundred and they were like, I don't know.
No, I, yeah.
You know, okay, you got the bills. So it's, okay, it's five, let's just say in the ballpark of five hundred separate paper envelopes that PWSA is sending to the city. Now we know, okay. And so, yeah, the. The question that I'm not sure anyone can answer yet either then is. What's the biggest water use, right? I mean, in my minds, I, I can only imagine like the swimming pools. But is that true or is that just a small fraction? Because we use so, we have so many toilets and three hundred facilities and it's really that.
It would be, well, sorry, Director. It would be a guess, but I don't think we actually know, but we, we do have to factor hydrants. There is a blank. Amount we're charged for hydrants, I assume.
Okay, great, because an hour ago, two hours ago, I was told that we're not charged for hydrants at all.
There could be, like, again, I'm not, maybe I shouldn't talk because I'm not ready to speak about water.
Okay, so that's, that's an open question. Can you get back to us?
Sure.
Because it's kind of really relatively timely right now, because again, we just, we just had a provisional vote on selling system and I said, are we getting billed for hydrants? The answer was no. I said, if you, if we don't pay our bill, do you like cut off the hydrants? The answer was no, so. Do you want to?
Yeah, do you, do you mean billed for hydrant use, whatever we take from a hydrant?
I don't know. You tell me. I don't, is what's happening?
Any of our equipment, flusher, sweeper that uses water has a meter on it. So we fill the flusher up with three gallons, three thousand gallons of water, that's metered. I don't know where the bill goes, but any, any sweeper that holds three hundred fifty gallons, when they fill up, you see them filling up.
Where do they fill up? Like they're not, are they filling up on a street?
Yeah, on the street, at a hydrant, yeah.
How do they know to bill you for that and that that's?
The meter's on the piece of equipment.
Oh, it's not on the hydrant, it's on the piece of equipment. That was really helpful. Thank you. Yeah, they didn't say that. They seem to not know. Curious. Okay, so we are getting bills for hydrants.
Hydrant use.
Hydrant use. Hydrant use.
Use, which is different.
Yeah, correct. Um, I think to the question of what do we use the most water at, I think the real que, I mean, my facility instinct would tell me that it's likely gonna be um, fire station or police station, someplace with twenty-four hour um, access. Now, obviously in the summer months when we're filling up a pool, that's gonna be in case. And then you all, you also have to factor in the condition of the facilities that are using water. Um, what we receive from Pittsburgh Water, in my estimate, my back of the envelope estimate, um, I would estimate our water usage from Pittsburgh Water this calendar year to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, nine point one million, um, from what I've seen. But again, that's my best guess without auditing the work. Um, was this actually a true accounting? Um, you know, that's just to get us in the ballpark. I would expect that usage to continue. Um, but as we get more accurate information, that allows us to be more strategic about um, investments in the reduction of water usage, um, where we might have leaks. We've had some of those programs in the past that drove um, the investment in more pool several years ago, um, because that was a PA, I was a PA American Water um, metered asset. Um, it was filled up eight times in the month of August in like twenty twenty eighteen, twenty twenty seventeen and we, you know, we, but we can only do that work with the real time information of receiving a monthly bill, much easier to diagnose, um, to Dawn's point, when we get that as a consolidated bill so that we can be strategic about and not, again, have to literally open five hundred envelopes a month. Um, so it's a, clearly a point of concern. Um, it is, um, you know, I think that, I think. Since we are also on the topic of deferred maintenance, I think you can look at the water system as also the um, a symptom of deferred maintenance as well. Um, my approach to that is to um, in understanding the history, um, which has not all been uh, great, but um, to partner with them as best as we can. Um, to help residents and ratepayers who are one in the same, um, have clean drinking water, um, and just be, you know, accountable to each other.
Let's switch to vehicles. So.
Can I just say one thing in the water before we close out? I just want to make sure we were, like, I just want to make sure that we're all cognizant. And when we talk about water, we also are talking about PA American, right? There are two companies in this, players in this game. Um, PA American, you know, handles the southern parts of the city, but if PWSA gets their rate increased, then PA American's gonna come and increase theirs because we do a match, right? So P, PA Americans' rates are determined by what PWSA's rates are, so that, and then we pay any difference they want. So, anyway, so I just want to throw, add that to the water discussion, that it's not just Pittsburgh Water, but sorry, please.
Thank you. Um, so let's switch to vehicles. The, um, I noticed that you very helpfully kind of listed of the different vehicle types, how many were down and how many were operational. I feel like council is really starting to get a picture painted for us. Um, we've had a recent post agenda that, you know, different kinds of vehicles are in the shop more than others, right? And so at a very high level, people will be like, well, the old vehicles are in the shop more. That is true, but that is not only true. There are new vehicles that are in the shop more than other new vehicles. My hypothesis, right, is what I've been told from briefings and listening here at the table and various discussions is that some of them are just so damn big and fancy, they don't work. Is that fair?
I mean, I can only speak to our fleet. So, you know, Chuck, Bill, you would be my vehicle experts here, so please weigh in. From my perspective, um, you know, age is part of a determining factor, right? So when you look at this snowboard here, um, and you see the streets division total twelve down, three to vendor, and you see the overall total for the, for the department that is snow capable, and you see eighty-eight and you see thirteen down. Well, those additional eighteen trucks are. Parks Maintenance and Construction Division.
Both those that are um.
Of those eight, of those eighteen additional that are snow capable, they come from Parks Maintenance and Construction Division. You notice there's only one additional down in that inventory. All of the parks trucks for exclusively new. So.
You're saying these are all the exact type of vehicle?
They're, they're, yes, these, these are, these are the same type of.
And they are the Rat Peckers or no?
No, this is, these, snowboard is trucks capable of.
Snowboard, this board?
Yes.
They are all, what kind of vehicle?
Uh, they vary between a ten ton, uh, five ton and a one ton. And then there's a smattering of pickups, correct?
Pickup trucks, yes.
And you're saying that they are in the shop at the same rate?
I'm saying that the older trucks are in the shop more frequently.
That is understood.
Yeah.
But is there additionally any variation in the ones by type of vehicle?
On the snow, on the snow fleet, no. I would say, I would say not. Um, Chuck, I don't know if you've experienced that. I would say that that could possibly be the case for um, environmental services.
Right.
Yeah, um, our snow fleet is, our, our small trucks, which would be our pickup trucks and one tons, is mainly a Ford manufacturer. And we did that for one reason, to keep the shop moving quicker, to get the trucks in and out quicker, so they don't have to carry ten different manufacturer parts they're carrying forward, and they have a few Chevys. And now our bigger trucks, which will be our five tons, is a mixture of HENo's and Internationals, and we try to stick with the Internationals because that's the bulk of them. So again, with the big trucks, keep all the same parts, the parts more available. So it's, it doesn't matter what brand, um, and it doesn't matter the, the newness of it and the age of, and the age of it, it just matters what breaks on it, and it's not more frequent of the new ones or the older ones. It's a mixture. You could have a brand new one down for two days, and you can have an old one down for two days or an old one down for two months, depending upon parts availability.
Yeah, so this is what we're beginning to learn. The world has changed. It's not the same as it was ten years ago, right? So supply chains fall down, um, and then our trucks are out of service and then people are yelling at us because our streets aren't swept, right? Or their garbage isn't picked up. Um, so. We don't have to get all of the answers today, but I feel like we need to ask more and new questions and maybe learn from other cities and which equipment they have and what is the reliability of the equipment they have, because we're all getting screwed on our repair contract to TransDev, right? That much we understand. And we just don't have the budget to buy a big enough fleet that like thirty percent of it's in the shop all the time, right? We also know that that's true. We also know that, again, because of supply chain and because the world has changed and monopolization and centralization of these vendors, that they, sometimes it takes five years after we've paid for a vehicle to get it. So, you know, I need the, the public to understand that as well. So we can't keep doing the same things in the same way. It is not gonna work.
I wasn't sure what you meant by our trucks are so fancy and have so many bells and whistles on them that they're broken down more often.
Huge, right?
Well, they're huge, yeah. And there's a lot of controls and there's a lot of things that can go wrong, but uh, you know, that's why TransDev's there to, to repair them.
Yeah, and that, well, but we can't afford that. We can't afford that contract, honestly. That was a ridiculously big contract and we can't afford for that much of our fleet to be at TransDev all the time. So. I, I still say, let's, let's try to, it's, it's worth the effort to try to see if there's things that we can do differently, um, including even though it's, this is again, too broad of a brush stroke, but the smaller, simpler vehicles, even though we'd need more crew or the routes would have to change or the where we have supplies would have to change, if they're more reliable, it might be worth just kind of thinking through that to see if it's actually would improve lower costs and improve service to residents. Something like, you know, I know that we can, we haven't talked about it before, that the trucks we've leased that were smaller, we can put attachments on them for distributing salt. They're not a huge multi-ton truck. They can pick up a giant load of salt. So do we have to have different salt depots in different places? I don't know. Like I said, you're the experts at that. I'm just think, I'm just saying that I think we're gonna keep asking these questions to try to think outside of the box. So, because, you know, I, I'm just on the back, we've had this, this budget for about a week and, and we were told that we had to trim thirty million dollars off it and that number, the more budget hearings we have, is going up. Um, so. The fear from citizens, right, is when the city is suddenly having to pay a thirteen or ten million dollar water bill instead of zero, is that they're not gonna get their pool this summer. Right? And so where, where does this money come from? So what, what do we, you know, we gotta do some things again, differently than we have been doing. And I'll just leave it there because these are, these are very in-depth conversations, but this, I want to also want to note that this is a really helpful presentation. The, the slides are really nice, some of those graphs with the little exploding things about which, how many vehicles are out of service or where the snowfall was. That was, it really helped us, I think, understand a lot of information and, and the slideshow. Appreciate it. I'll stop there, Madam Chair. Thank you again, Mr. Charlin. Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Charlin.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. Well, thank you guys.
Sorry, we've been joined by Councilman.
Thank you, thank you.
Apologies. Thank you. Uh, I appreciate you guys being here um, this afternoon. I know that this is, you know, we're in challenging financial times. I, you know, don't think that it's solely anyone's fault. I don't think that anybody on this council really feels that way. Um, but it is, you know, because of the situation that the um, that the budget is in, as the budget came to us, it becomes our problem to solve. Um, so, you know, I, I want to, to acknowledge that, that this is not where any of us want to be. Um, I think we've talked a lot about the water bill, um, coming, you know, what this is gonna look like this year. I, I don't think that it was necessarily on any of our radars as like this was, we knew the fleet's the problem, we knew AM was breaking down, we didn't, I, I was not aware of the, the water bill issue. Um, but, you know, Dawn, you and I have talked um, often as we're walking into the building, um, about challenges around the utility bills, I think all year, um, maybe even longer than that. And, and you know, kind of what we're able to, to save in terms of paying on P cards and things like that, that you've been able to, to work through. And I do appreciate the effort there and, and I feel like that is something that I have been, um, I, I don't think I realized necessarily how big of a problem this was, but I, I do think it was adequately aware of how, that this is an issue and that I think often, I, I don't, I think this is the first year in my time in city government where I've thought about the water bill that we have to pay or the utility bills that we have to pay. Um, I know that, you know, water bill is new, but, but it is a, something that I think that we've been adequately aware of. So I want to thank you for, for giving us that. Um, I also, you know, I, I want to acknowledge a couple, um, you know, great things that have happened from Public Works this year. The uh, your, I'm not actually even sure which team it is, but I think it's the warehouse team was able to deliver um, chairs and, and tables as we did the first annual Knoxville block party and all the help that you were able to give with the roadblocks. I, I really do appreciate that. Um, one of my stated goals for the year was to try to uh, build community in Knoxville, which is, is an area where we don't have a whole lot of community engagement. Public Works certainly played a huge role in that and I, I do very much appreciate the team there. I don't know if I had an opportunity to thank any of you for that. You're always uh, incredibly helpful, especially like some of the little stuff, like the barricades to help shut down a street when we've got a block party and inevitably the community group forgot to put in their permit on time and we have to call and beg. Um, and, you know, I do appreciate the, the work we've done there. Um, you know, we've gone on and on about the vehicle challenges. I don't think we need to talk a whole lot more about that today. Um, I think that's kind of well documented, both here and within the press and, and all throughout. I do want to ask though, um, how are we set up as it stands today, November nineteenth, for the winter that, that's coming up?
You can see from our snowboard, um, we have, um, you know, streets division is our first line of deployment. So we have seventy trucks available. We do not put out all seventy trucks, um, because inevitably every snow event will result in trucks um, becoming broken. Those breakdowns are a variety. It could just be the, you know, the snow plow drifted off. It could be a spinner issue. It could be a mechanical issue with the truck that makes it longer down. It's hard to predict. We have to have um, those trucks in reserve so we can put our operators in a seat of a new vehicle and get them back out on the road servicing folks. This relates to our um, twenty-four hour service level that we try to meet. Um, is our goal and our intent to do that. Um, you know, it is always a challenge. Um, it is a challenge in city to deal with, in the, in the city to deal with snow. Um, but, you know, this is, this is where we are currently with those vehicles. Um, I have to anecdotally note, you know, because of, um, you know, the effects of the mighty wind, um, and the overage of um, some of the utilities, our ability to rent and the impacts to environmental services, um, of downed vehicles, um, our ability to rent, um, or have funds available to rent um, snow equipment this year is just not gonna be available to us. But um, we are okay with that. Um, we didn't find those rentals to be particularly useful. Over the last calendar year, um, they were a little bit limited. Um, we just have a challenging topography to deal with and we just need, um, there's just certain considerations that we need to have that a rental fleet doesn't really provide for us. So um, we will weather the storm as it comes.
Uh, what, what do we do when we've got folks that are working in the divisions and we don't have trucks to, to don't have trucks to, to send them out in? What, you know, I, I'm just, there's so many, there's, you know, a certain number of trucks at each division. There's more employees than we have trucks. What, what do we do in snow operations for that?
Well, we would put some, someone else to accompany the driver in the, in the truck and, uh, read off the route to them rather than pulling over and looking at, you know, three streets ahead and here's where I'm going to go. Uh, that certainly facilitates things and, and quickens the route. Uh, aside from that, there are steps and sidewalks to salt. Um, there's, uh, providing again, they have a truck to put some salt in and, and go to the, uh, McCandless Street steps wherever they're going. Um, uh, yeah, so trucks are a challenge, no question.
I think too, um, you know, some of the things that we do are, um, we balance the staffing, um, based on shift. Um, so we seek to have 24-hour staffing, um, this year, um, in every division, seven days a week. Um, and so because of that, uh, that does limit our ability to staff up, um, in the event during certain occasions, um, which, you know, we balance that against the pieces of equipment that we have available. Um, and so this year, but the, the advantage of that is, um, much, much less likely to get caught, what I like to say, flat-footed, um, in the event of the, um, lake effect pop-up snow event that might happen on a Saturday afternoon at 2:00 PM, um, that nobody predicted, not even the weather, um, not even the National Weather Service, bless them. But, um, you know, that will allow us to be responsive and fight while we can get resources into the divisions to fight those storms. So, um, we balance it in a, to answer your question, we balance that in a variety of ways. We try to just make sure we have it and then as Bill noted, there's other work that can be performed. Um, we have other implements, um, that we, that we use as well, tractors, um, that type of thing, anything that we can do to, um, get the snow off the street, we will.
Yeah, and in the winter months, we, um, we staff up on the off, um, the off shift, so two to 10 and, you know, there's additional people there. And, uh, 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM overnight, there's additional people there. So, um, there's, there's trucks, if you say the, the daylight trucks, the daylight crew doesn't have enough trucks for all the men. Well, now when we implement the, the, uh, winter operations mid-December, then that'll all, uh, you know, uh, that'll, that'll work out.
Uh, so in those winter operations, what are folks from the streets divisions doing? You know, in the, the, what'd you say, the 10 to, 10 to 6 shift, the, the overnight shift, if, if it's not snowing?
If it's not snowing, weather permitting, um, they're street sweeping, they're patching potholes, they're emptying litter cans.
In the middle of the night?
In the middle of the night.
Okay.
Um, you know, in the business areas, those bump outs that are, you know, litter collectors, um, get in there and clean out those little curb cuts that, uh, some department is, uh, happy to put all over the place, but, uh, yeah, so that's what we do.
Fair enough. Um, okay, I, well, I, you know, I do have a lot of, uh, you know, we'll obviously have a lot more to say about the trucks as, and snow operations and what that means is the year goes, or the year goes on here. Um, I do want to ask, uh, well, let's go to a fun one first. Uh, maybe not that fun. We have horses, uh, for the police and, uh, council kind of, we voted to get rid of the horses. Uh, we ultimately didn't do that, but the horses were back out, um, in October in Southside around, uh, around Halloween here. The horses unfortunately, uh, don't wear diapers. And we had major issues, uh, on East Carson Street with horse droppings. I asked the police chief, you know, how, how are we going to handle that in the future if we're going to keep these horses? Um, there was some, I, I don't know if that plan has necessarily worked out, but kind of the idea was that, um, public, I think Public Works is going to be, uh, staffing the stable and, and being able to help with cleaning there. Is that a conversation that you guys have had?
Conversation has not reached my desk.
Okay.
When one of our trucks has a hydraulic oil leak, we go out and we spread oil dry and we clean that up. If one of their vehicles, conveyance has an issue with droppings, then they should go out and clean it up.
Well, I think we're going to have to figure something out for that if the horses are, are here to stay. Um, we left some, there was this, um, uh, some droppings that were well tread, tread on over last, you know, couple of weeks in Southside and we've really had some issues with that. So do want to make sure that we figure, I don't, I don't want that to gunk up a, uh, a street sweeper. I mean, or maybe, I, I don't know what to do with it, I'll be honest with you. I don't, I don't.
I know where you could bring it on. I'm just, I'm, I apologize. I literally just toured the Philadelphia composting and all the street leaves are composted and so are their, their horse manure. Like composted by, by Park, their, their DPW division uses them in their composting facilities. So it's a city asset, but it does seem to be cleaned off the street. So I apologize. I'm not saying that it belongs on the street to be tried on.
Uh, man, there's a joke to be made there.
There sure is.
About Philadelphia, take, anyway. Um, yeah, but if Philadelphia would like to take, nevermind. Uh, so I, I mean, I guess it is something we're, we're going to have to figure out here. Uh, okay, where are we, shifting subjects here, where are we in terms of, uh, of the qual, implementation of quality of life or launch of qual, quality of life ticketing? Where, what, what is the holdup here?
Marcel, I think you're closest to that. Do you mind addressing?
Uh, sure. So they have started, um, issuing quality of life tickets. I think initially they just needed some time to evaluate and really take a deep dive as to why folks haven't been really, uh, picking up, cleaning up. Uh, uh, but they, they have started that process.
The day of ticketing?
Yes.
Really? Okay. Um, I thought our game plan was to try to do a phase-in period to make sure that people knew why they were getting, is that, was that not?
I mean, they started the phasing period.
Oh, really? Okay. Okay. Well, that's helpful to know. Um, I think we probably need to do a good job of getting the word out on that if that is the case. So, okay. Um, shifting subjects again. Uh, sorry, I've, I've got a whole bunch of questions that are not really in a whole lot, a lot of orders here. Uh, what, the streets division specifically, or operations, I guess, is looking at seven, uh, 700,000 in overtime over what was allotted last year to, you know, what the, sorry, the budgeted versus actual this year. Um, next year, it looks like that is one of, that is one of the few things that in, in overtime we are going up in, um, but it's still not to where you spent money last year. Is that, do we think that's just largely related to the, the straight wind event is, you know, not an every year occurrence? Is that part of it or do we think that that number is still not where it needs to be?
I mean, I think that's part of it. You know, there's going to be overtime fluctuations related to snow and ice control. Um, you know, because we will always work overtime in those instances because it's a matter of public safety. Um, you know, I note that in 2024, we had the large flood, which also drove, um, a lot of overtime. So I, you know, I think that there's annual variability there that's hard to predict that we need to kind of, it's also hard to account for, um, in a, in a, in a budget. And I think that, um, you know, I, we try to be as flexible as possible, but we have a, we do have a public safety mission. Um, and a lot of our work, a lot of our overtime work, um, in the department is geared towards that public safety mission, whether it's, um, snow and ice removal or dealing, dealing with some other weather event or, you know, again, responding to like facility, emergency, facility-related emergency.
Um, do we think that the number is appropriate for this year?
I think it's light. Um, I do, um, but again, there's a lot of, a lot of our overtime is strictly driven by, um, environmental events and, you know, supporting special events. So, um, some of it is predictable. I'm sure that the budget included is like covers that which we traditionally historically do for our special events, you know, the NFL draft notwithstanding, the specialist of events. Um, but the, stop laughing, Bill. Um, you know, I, I would say it's, it's, I would, I would feel that it is a little bit light for seasonal response.
Okay.
Can I just add the caveat is it is light also because we haven't programmed, uh, AFME increase, the 3% AFME increase. So if, if, if we have a, a number now, right, and then we add the 3% into our budget, that just means overtime's going to cost more as well, right? Because it's going to be 3% higher. Um, our 12-year average on overtime as a department is 1.4 million a month and that's a 12-year average without any cost of living increases and all that kind of stuff.
That brings up a question. Uh, are, AFME is being negotiated. Um, are we, are we negotiating PJCC? Is that happening? Are they?
No, 249, which is Environmental Services, is currently being negotiated.
249, okay. Um, yeah, uh, that, that could certainly change things as well. I, I've heard a little bit about those negotiations. Um, okay, the, your office is also adding, um, a neighborhood engagement coordinator. Um, can you tell me a little bit about what that person is going to be doing? Um, and, you know, what, what services will be providing here?
Um, pardon the pun, but we have not yet engaged, engaged a human on that. Um, but certainly, um, it will be consistent with their current program.
Is it, is, is that one of the positions that is going from, uh, Neighborhood Services to, is that a, a transfer?
Yeah, from Mayor's Office to, we just haven't had a chance to connect with that person yet.
Gotcha, okay. Um, the, want to talk cleaning leans. Um, I saw the numbers that you had up there, citywide. Do you by chance have the numbers for the vision? Is that, is it easily defined or is that going to take a minute?
Fourth division as of right now, as of today had, their total in cleaning leans is 195.
Okay.
In the fourth division area. When we started out in the summertime and then actually the very early spring, they were in the neighborhood of almost 300 and some total.
Wait, so they, they finished the year with 195, but they had 300 earlier?
Yes.
Uh, 300 outstanding?
Outstanding.
Gotcha, okay. So they completed 195?
Almost that, yes. Yeah, well, that, yeah, they, no, they have 195 outstanding right now.
195 outstanding?
Yes.
Okay. How many were, how many were completed this year?
Total, not, I don't have the total of the fourth division, but the total that we completed throughout every division is, um, 437.
Okay. Uh, I would be interested in the number for the fourth division and, you know, again, I, I think that is something that we will always, we, we will never have a mission accomplished in cleaning leans, but at the same time, it is one of the most impactful things that we do for our neighborhoods.
One of the biggest things that we changed this year, because our numbers are so high, we had a two-week blitz in the fourth division from July, from June 23rd to July 3rd. So we had every division working every day for two weeks that time. And also we did it in September 9th through the 19th, same thing, weather permitting. It was raining, they couldn't do it. So they had anywhere between four, I, I told them to go out four days a week. Have one day for at least cleaning up your equipment and getting it ready for the following week. They were, they were accomplishing anywhere between 50 to 60 cleaning leans that week just in the Knoxville and Beltsover area. So they did a bang-up job this year and everybody did. That's where these numbers increased from 2024 to 2025.
It's, and it's, it's great to hear that, you know, it also at the same time is like, you know, I hate to say this, but it's just not enough. Like we, we need more. Um, it is, especially in those neighborhoods, you mentioned Knoxville, Beltsover, Allentown. Those are neighborhoods that, that I'm constantly getting beat up about the overgrown grass and, uh, you know, what, what's, what are we going to do to cut the grass here? And sometimes it's, it's city-owned property, sometimes it's, you know, a variety of different things, but.
Right.
It is always something that, you know, if we tripled the amount of, uh, you know, of, of cleaning leans, I, it still probably wouldn't be enough. It's something we, you know, need to have as a core function here. One thing that I'm very worried about with cleaning leans next year, I, I, I think I've brought up before that, uh, if, if we can get to cutting some of this, some of these yards when the growing season starts, then we don't have to cut down the sumaks that inevitably grow out of there. It becomes much less of a, uh, much less of a task. I would love to see us do the clean and lean blitzes, you know, in May and April in the growing season, but I know that we're going to be dealing with a lot of draft stuff at that time. I am worried that we'll be able to, you know, to hit the clean and leans hard than next year.
Well, I believe next year is when we're going to stand up the clean and lean division, correct, Director?
Yeah, yeah, upon the completion of the fourth division.
Yeah, so we're going to have a, a dedicated divi, dedicated labor just to do that throughout the summer and we'll have to add to it as we go along to see how many labors we need. Be nice to get the same amount of people out, which is usually around 20 people going out and hitting a division for two days a week.
That, I mean, that would, would be, uh...
You know, we could, we could, I figured our plan would be like every two weeks, we're going to spend two weeks in each division, just a rotation every two weeks until we get through and start back over again. So it would be more frequent, more people out there as long as we have the equipment to back the, you know, to help support the service.
Yeah, everything comes back to the equipment, it seems like.
Right, it, it does. I mean, we're, we're adding a little bit more and more smaller equipment, but we do need medium and large equipment to do the bigger jobs. Cause most of these cleaning leans they did this year was smaller ones where they just needed weed whackers and small lawnmowers. We didn't get into where we needed heavy equipment, heavy ironed in order to, to clean the properties out. So that, those properties suffer a little bit because we don't have the equipment.
Yeah, I, I guess just kind of from my experience and I, it was last year when I went out on the clean and lean blitz in Knoxville, you know, seeing some of those, the bigger yards that were being taken care of, but I'm also saying that, you know, that it's, it's the, it's the grass cutting that, you know, if we can get to it, we can get to it with a mower, we don't have to get to it with a, you know, I don't know, heavier equipment. So.
Correct.
Um, the, want to talk a little bit about Environmental Services. Uh, so, you know, the, the biggest complaint that I get from Environmental Services is that most of the trash ends, ends up in the back of a vehicle, but not everything ends up in the, the back of the vehicle. The, the bags rip and folks that are working there don't take the time to sweep up after, um, after, you know, if a bag's ripped or something falls out or whatever it is. What can we do to, to change that, that culture?
Great question.
I think, I, well, we spoke about having litter cans, or not litter cans, trash cans at the house, not just recycle, but a tight-fitting, uh, trash can. And I think, you know, when the raccoons and whatever critter gets into it overnight, when they're set out early, uh, they pick it up and they might not even see what falls out and then they throw it into the back of the truck. But, uh, you know, every truck should have a broom and a shovel on it and they should address whatever comes, falls out of that truck or doesn't make it into the truck. If we need to reinforce that, then we'll reinforce that.
Yeah, and I think too, um, you know, we hear the complaint, but do we ever give the kudos to the people that are actually doing the work with the broom and the shovel to clean it up? I mean, I witnessed that this morning. Um, Councilman Coghill in your neighbor, in, in your district, um, and I stopped to just say, hey, say, hey, thanks. And once that happens, we also have to acknowledge that, um, you know, like it is extremely difficult to get every single piece, right? Like, um, because it's, it's solid waste, um, so it could be... Right? Like, um, because it's, it's solid waste. Um, so it could be something that's staining the pavement, it could be whatever it is. Um, all manner of waste. So, um, some of that cleanup, that manual cleanup in that way becomes really difficult. The way to prevent it, I think, is as Bill said, as we've mentioned, is, um, going to solid waste container with a tight fitting lid and, um, you know, mechanical means of, a more mechanical mean of disposal. Tippers on the trucks, that type of thing. And so those are things that we can contemplate in the future. I mean, we can certainly happily reinforce it with the employees, the expectation. Um, but, you know, I think it also comes with the expectation that like not every single piece of debris that might come from a, from a bag is going to be able to be picked up.
Just, you know, the guy with the statistics, right? Environmental Services, since this is a budget hearing and we, we want to talk about growth, Environmental Services has not seen their headcount grow in thirteen years. They have been within five employees of two hundred budgeted for thirteen years.
Yeah, I, and I, and I understand that and I also understand that like right now our limiting factor, again, vehicles. I guess, I, I had an experience not too long ago where I, I was actually having some friends over for the weekend. Trash day is Thursday. My trash gets picked up. But there's like rib bones or chicken bones or something in the middle of the street and I'm out there with a, uh, you know, a shovel picking up rib bones that probably came from one of my neighbors. Because I don't want my neigh, you know, friends that are coming over to think that I live in a pigsty. And it's like, I, it's in the middle of the street, I, I have to imagine that it came from environmental service, a bag ripping and someone saying like, oh, let's keep it, keep it moving. So that's the kind of thing, like I, I, I don't know what the incentive program is to get more of that happening. I know it slows the routes down and I know that's not, their, their system is not set up to, you know, they're incentivized to get done as quickly as possible, but it's, it would be nice to see ways that we can make that more of a priority. Uh, the last thing that I am, uh, you know, gonna ask here, same thing I'm asking all the departments, and I know that it is, is gonna be very challenging for yours, but we're in a time where we have to make tough decisions about, um, about the budget. And, you know, I don't think any of us want to be here and again, I don't want to fault, you know, any one department for, for putting us in this position. Um, I think as, I think maybe Councilwoman Warwick said this and Pete stole it and now I've stolen it, but we're getting to the point now where we don't, we don't have a whole lot of fat that we can trim. We need to start thinking about how to trim into the muscle. And I, I want to make sure that it's something that you're thinking about. If we do have to have, um, a reduction, what that would, would look like and what you'd be able to uh, reduce. And I don't want really answers today, but I want that to be something that is starting to percolate in your mind as we're going through being able to pass a, a budget that's responsible, what that would really mean, you know, there's, there's one world where we go through and we pick out things in the budget and say, that's what we're gonna cut. And there's another world where you say, this is gonna hurt us, but we can live with this. Um, I, which, you know, is better than, than us just kinda picking numbers and, and making it work. So, want to make sure that's something that you guys are starting to think about. Not an enviable position for any of us to be in, so.
Fully noted, we're prepared. Um, we can be prepared to do that certainly. I would also ask, at the same time, um, if this is our current condition, I mean, it begs the question, how did we get here? Um, and what can we do differently? I think one of the things that I constantly praise about my team and I would say this to the public as well. You know, we understand the situation that we are in, but that does not mean that we stop trying to get better at what we do. Every day we spend trying to get better in some ways little, um, in some ways big. Um, but in most ways little. And I would encourage everyone to consider a model whereby a hundred or a thousand small and little improvements here or there. Much more effective and responsive to um, the concerns of the public and the safety of the public than any system that makes large scale all-in massive structural changes. Um, we've seen that here in public works. I think the real-time safety system speaks to that. Um, I think there are tremendous learnings there that can be taken and applied to all facets of government. Um, so we welcome the conversation, we're here to help. You know, we understand that it's tough fiscal times, though, you know, we, we also welcome challenge. We don't, we don't shy away from it.
I, you know, no, I have a lot more thoughts on this, but I, I do think that we we are hearing from a lot of different departments of that, that the belt has been tightened as much as we, as we can tighten. Unfortunately for us, we need to tighten it more. Um, it is unfair to this council that we were not, you know, we were not there when the, the tightening happened from July until November. You know, when, when the, the fat was trimmed. Um, so we unfortunately don't, don't have the real, the real ability to give credit for that. The folks that would be able to give credit to that did not make those cuts to provide us a, a place that we're responsible. So it, it becomes a, a real challenging situation for us and, you know, our much smaller staffs and our much more limited ability to forecast and, and revenue project for us to try to figure out how we can, can make next year work, but that's where we're at, so. All right.
Well, I'm happy to help you write our budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, um, I'm really glad you asked the departments that question. That is a very important question as to like where, what would you trim? I'm, I'm interested to see your responses if you got any yet, but, uh, you know, don't wait, don't wait by the mailbox.
The fourth, fourth council district is what they're gonna say.
Yeah, exactly. So, okay, so I want to pick up first of all, right where, um, well, first I'm gonna say this, when I was chair of Public Works, it was a pleasure working with, oh, you, you know, you are one of the most professional departments, your, your, your labors do a bang up job under your leadership, I will tell you, Director. You know, I felt morale was good. I felt like you were responsive to me all the time and I really appreciated working for Public Works. I don't miss it though, I will tell you, especially in the winter. And I don't know how Councilwoman Warwick did through the last year or two, but it seemed like every snowfall was like Christmas Day, New Year's Day. This goes back to, this goes back to Chuck or, um, Mike Gable, really, you know? And I'm like three hundred calls on Christmas Day. Oh, my gosh. So, so I don't know about your timing, but my timing was the absolute worst. And I always say the director of Public Works is a difficult job as it is, but you couldn't pay me enough to be the director of Public Works through winter, at least in my district, I would tell you. It got to the point where I was doing so many interviews and I knew so much, they thought I was the Public Works director. I used to carry a picture around of him. I'm like, this is the guy you want, you know? So anyway, so it is a brutal job and, you know, there's a lot of moving pieces and you, you have good experienced people like Chuck here. I know you've been, how many years you've been on the job now, Chuck?
Twelve.
Twelve, oh, you're only twelve years in, yeah, okay. But, um, your reputation precedes you. I, you know, people tell me you're super agent or seller, everybody knows. And Bill, you've been in Public Works for how many years?
A long time.
Yes. I'm starting to answer questions like that myself. So, so, but, but I just want to commend the job you do. Whether it's rubbish on my sidewalk, I called you about once, just to what Councilman Charlin was saying. And, you know, everybody carries a shovel and a broom and it's picked up like that. So I, I appreciate your responsiveness, but. So I want to get into leaning cleans right away, um, as Councilman Charlin. I know because I get calls throughout the year and you're like, we're doing another one of your, uh, leaning cleans up here. I was like, oh yeah, where you at? We're, we're up here in Allentown. I'm like, not my district. So I know District Three got a, like a lot done, right? I keep tabs on it because everybody thinks it's my district. And sometimes I actually take credit for it, but, uh, so, um, but, you know, they are, as Councilman Charlin said, that is the most, even though this should not fall on us, it really stinks that we have to do this. This is private property, basically. And we're taking care of somebody else's responsibility. And that stinks. I mean, we could cite them, find them. Of course, they don't, a lot of them are not even in the country. A lot of them aren't, aren't in Pittsburgh, so. So they don't, a lot, a lot of them, they pay no attention to the citations. It's not like they pay somebody. But the most impactful thing, so much so where I started my own lean and clean. I don't know, have you heard? Have you seen my signs out there? I don't know. Councilman Coghill's cleanup crew. So obviously, I probably am breaking laws by going on private property, but, you know, it's a health hazard to this point. And people so much appreciate when we do these leaning cleans. And when I hear you talking about ramping it up out of the fourth division. Am I in trouble?
No. I thought maybe Councilwoman Warwick had the same crew going around.
No, I will take impactful ones that are just a disgrace. Don't get me wrong, I use, you know, the city services too when, when, when I can get you out of District Three, you know. But I will say, it is so impactful, I just decided, I feel like the taxpayers would rather me do that than be down here, you know, working on the budget, honestly. So, obviously I have to prioritize, but, um, so impactful, I love if we could pick that up and make that something special and even more so. And it sounds like you're moving in the right direction, so. I just want to say that is so appreciated by the constituents, you don't know. A lot of them, they don't know. They think it's our property. They have no clue that we're actually going on private property and doing this for your benefit, you know, which is above and beyond any, what any city should have to do, honestly. So, so I am a full supporter of that. I hope Chuck that we run that thing to death next year and, um, it's, it's a beautiful thing. People love it. So let's get, uh, let's, let's go back to a better, uh, subject is obviously the fourth division, right? I was like meeting up in Carrick last night and I said, it's taken eight years and thank you, my project manager from the way back when, Donnie, he kind of over, well, I know, but you've got us through all those tough times, you know, with the mineshaft and COVID and everything. So I really appreciated your work on that. And even now I drag you in, as you know, you know, so. So he's still, and it affects him because he's a Brookline, so he's counting on those services himself. So, um, so it's important to him for that reason too. But, but I will say I visit the site regularly, you know, even though it's in Councilman Charlin's district. I kind of claim it. Yeah, but, uh, but I visit it regularly and, uh, it looks like it's moving along pretty good. I'm expecting and anticipating by next winter, we're up fully, fully running, right? Yeah, so it'll be finished in the spring maybe, I guess.
Yeah, that's our, our target is this.
Yeah, yeah. And, and you know, after seeing it being erected, it's really involved, you know, just the foundation and every, everything, you know, I was just like, wow, but, but people are thrilled about it. Um, I'm thrilled about it, of course, finally put this thing to rest. Um, you know, but I will say between John McClory and Jeff Cook, they've done a fantastic job in trying to get our, you know, streets cleared in the winter, having to come from two different areas. So, so it's really, um, it's gonna be so welcoming. Obviously it doesn't affect Beachview, but Brookline, Carrick, and, you know, the rest, most of my district it does. So I love to see that moving along. That's a bright spot and, um, we're gonna be fully staffed. Are we gonna have a salt dome there or no? Are we gonna store salt there?
Salt Dome is capital budget. Oh, there, I mean, then we'll have the, we'll have the ability, we'll have the ability, sorry, I was mixing projects. But we'll have the ability to store locally there, like a small amount.
Yeah, so that'll enable us to get it out of Moore Park because I love what you did there with the paving and more. Everybody's thrilled about that parking lot down there, it needed paved. But really was, you know, the bigger vehicles come in there and, you know, they kind of, you know, our, whether it's a backloader, the dump trucks, you know, they beat it up. And, you know, so I'd love to get that salt out of there and just store it up to new division.
That would be, yeah, and, you know, we have the, the Route Fifty-One.
Yeah, right, right.
Project online for next year.
Oh, okay, so that's gonna be redone next year?
Uh, that is, that is the intent.
Also not my district, but I go by it every day and.
Well, service is your district.
Coat of paint on this thing, I thought, you know, but, but no, I, I can't wait. It's gonna be a wooden structure.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, so wooden structure, like, kind of what like PennDOT has.
Yes.
Yeah, great. It's gonna be like a cone silo.
Just a large barn.
Good, 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 good.
We're gonna have a hoe down in there when we open them, just kidding.
So, so that's great. Okay, let, let me just hit on a few things. I'm not gonna be long. It's been a long day for, long week for all of us. Is the, um, street sweepers, okay? I don't mind if, you know, I know that we're in positions where the, the fleet, the, the, the position that the fleet's in is horrendous, of course, you know, and it's problems whether it's Public Works obviously is very dependent on vehicles, probably more so as much as public safety is, obviously, so. Um, but, you know, when when, when people have to move their vehicles, and we talked about this last time, in order to get out of the way for the street sweeper, and a street sweeper doesn't come, that to me, I'd rather not schedule a street sweeper. Or I would say, let's look at IMP and it can't, you know how they give texts? Can't they text, you know? I mean, can't they work something out and be like, send them a text, street sweeper will know, do you not have to move your car today? Street sweeper is not coming because we're broken down again. Whatever, you know, I don't mind explaining that. They, people for the most part are understanding that, you know, we're in a bad way with the vehicles and everything. But it, when we require, when we make work for them, meaning, you know, I'm talking elderly people, you know, somebody my age. So, 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 you know, when they're moving their vehicles and, and then, oh, and they come out the next morning and it's like, oh, it's, it hasn't come. And it's like, oh God, that's, that's brutal. And, you know, sometimes it comes once a month. So they're moving their vehicle three times and getting one street sweep. So I'd rather discontinue it, honestly, than to make them move their vehicles like that. I really would. And just explain, and, you know, I will explain to my constituents. In my, I'd rather just keep them on the main roads, keep them on Broadway Avenue, Brookline Boulevard, and just forget about the residential streets because that's where people are moving their cars mostly. And that's where we're requiring them to do work. So, so whether I have to work with IMP to, you know, come up with a way where they could, that would be the ideal way if they could just message them and be like, you know, no need to move your car tonight, um, we're not coming. I'm fine with that, you know, but, um, but, but to have them move it and then, you know, come is just like, ugh, hurts me. Same with recycling, you know, I kind of have the same issue there, although recycling's much more steady, I think. But we've also had times where recyclables weren't picked up because of vehicles, I think, you know? Not often, not, not nearly as a street cleaning, but, but, you know, again, they're dragging their blue buckets out and, you know, stacking them up and all for naught. They come home and it's like, then they have to drag them back in. And then the next, then it's wait two more weeks and, or, and they're usually you schedule it like the next day or something, you try to, I know, but. So, so those things are the most bothersome things for me because we're causing people work because of our insufficiencies and our complaint counsel as far as the fleet goes, you know, all that, but, uh, blame, there's lots of blame to go around for, for the fleet, but, and lots of administrations to go to take blame on that. But, but those two items, recycling, street cleaning, I would, again, especially street cleaning, because I know we only have three operational basically at this point. And I feel like, you know, why don't we just?
There's five on the road today.
Five on the road today? Good, good, good. So, so if, if we can get them working, then that'd be, that would be the idea. I shouldn't say notifying. Ideally, we, we'd keep a regular schedule, but I just, they're expensive, I know. Um, they're expensive probably to fix and they're gonna be expensive to. Did you, did you, did I see here you're buying a couple?
Five, lease, long-term lease. Which includes a maintenance package.
Okay, okay. So like we're doing with the, like we did with the, um, the pickup truck storm snow removal.
Uh, in this case, it's, the lease is for five years. Um, it includes a maintenance package from the vendor.
Good.
Um, so they have a vested interest in.
Oh, so four, five-year lease? Oh, well, that's, that might be the answer. Then, then we could probably keep, uh, a regular without interruptions.
Yes, that's, that's the, that's the intent. That is the intent.
When do they arrive?
The first, the five arrive in, uh, early twenty twenty-six and we'll keep our.
Great, so by next season, we get the new fourth division, we'll have one stationed there permanently, right? Yeah, that's great.
Get up into Knoxville.
Well, of course, Allentown, Knoxville, yeah, I mean. So, okay, that's, that's really good. Um, that's good to hear. I, I, that would be the ideal situation, not notifying people, but and we can get through this, the rest of this season until early twenty-six and hopefully it'd be, uh, a better, more consistent, I should say, you know, that we have vehicles that we don't even have to bother to maintain, which is huge. As, you know, we were talking about transdev and I don't know who does the work on those vehicles if they go down. I wouldn't imagine, is that something like?
A street sweeper?
Yeah.
Uh, heavy equipment, heavy equipment repairs are street sweepers.
So we do that in-house?
Somewhat and, um, I believe, I believe transdev has some aspects of it.
Yeah, there's one sweeper, I guess two, one, just one.
There's one, there's one sweeper that's truck mounted, is the, um, Stuart Amos. And the ones that we are leasing are gonna be truck mounted, so they would go to transdev. They wouldn't go to heavy equipment. so they would go to TransDev, they wouldn't go to heavy equipment, we just kind of took TransDev and heavy equipment out of the, the equation and said, let's just do the maintenance through the vendor.
Got it.
For the five years.
Again, it's a lease, so they have a vested interest in making sure that the vehicles will maintain in operation.
Got it, got it, okay, um, the other thing was, uh, salt distribution on the vehicles, are we regulating that still this year, or are we? I, you know, I, I mean, I know, you, I remember Mike Gable, I, you know, it, I hated it, I hated it, it was like, oh, the technology says we only have to put this much down.
No, no, no.
It's a solid two device.
Just no.
Dump it, we're not trying to save money on salt, we're not, you know, so, so he was talking about saving this much money on salt, and I'm like, meanwhile, people were skiing down my streets, and like, we don't want to save money on salt, we just don't, you know, so.
That, that program proved to be non-effectual for a couple of different reasons, one, um, just didn't work right, um, from what I heard from operators, and what I witnessed myself with my own two eyes, um, you know, they would back up, or they would go, and there would be a time when the spinner wouldn't engage. Chuck could probably give you a dissertation on why we believe that was, but we worked a lot on the vendor on that. That also proved the sensing, um, that was supposed to tell us how much salt we were using, and how much salt we were putting out, um, didn't report in right, so there's just lots of problems, we have abandoned that, we have, um, opted for a more, um, a much, a much simpler approach to, um, monitoring salt uses, because there is value in that, that tells us, um, you know, we still want to put, uh, the right amount of salt.
Of course, yeah.
At the right time.
Right, and we don't want it all over our streets and going down our sewers and into our streams either, but at the same time, we have to make our streets safe by solving them, so it's basically at their discretion, you have good.
Right, the operator, yes, the operator would have control. The operator has the controls, and we monitor, and we work with them, and it's a dialogue.
That's, that's great, that, that's great, I used to have people call me and say, the salt truck came down, but they didn't put any salt down, I'm like, what do you mean? And, um, sure enough, I mean, they put salt down, but when Mike Gable was saving us all that money, you couldn't hardly notice at times, you know, so, and again, it depends, if it's a sunny day, yes, it melts right away, if it's a cold windy day, no, you have to put more salt down, it's just, that's why I like the fact that you're leaving it up to your drivers, Chuck, good, good idea, I think, so, um, we talked about quality of life, and that's the program you started, right? The, uh.
I legislate that.
Yeah, 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 so, so that's, um, citing people for trash and stuff like that, right? I have one on, I have one I want to put on the list as well, I'm asking you, J.D. Breider on West Liberty Avenue, you know, the old car, the car programmer, they got a pileful of garbage there, um, I, I guess they moved out, they, they vacated, you know, they're, they're no longer there, but they left us with like a pileful of garbage, almost, you know.
If they leased.
Hundred bags, I would say.
If they leased it, who's the property owner?
I don't know if they leased it, or they're the property owner, that's a good question, I don't know, but, uh, whoever it is, I'd like to slap a fine on them at least, you know, if, if we have that at this point, do we?
We can send one of the inspectors.
Certainly send it to our inspector team.
You can't miss it, I mean, if you're, uh, when you come out of the tubes of Tanside up the road, and you can see it from there, you'll see a big pile of garbage, basically, you know, so I'm not sure who's property or who's responsible, but, and this program, which I loved, and I supported, that, um, you know, this legislation that Councilman Charlin put in, I feel like that's exactly what that's for, right? Overtime, overtime, um, you're obviously, you can't predict, like you said, I saw the mighty winds, you know, and I, what a, wow, it was crazy, but, um, obviously required a lot of overtime, um, you know, people were, we couldn't get people out fast enough, obviously, or, or many people out there, so you can never predict in your business, you really can't predict like, how much overtime you're going to need or not, if it were sunny seventy-degree days every day around, if it's where Miami, maybe, but this is Pittsburgh, and this time of year, you just, if we get hit with a snowstorm, and an ice storm on top of it, and then another snowstorm, and then it melts, and then it freezes again, it's like, pretty much killed in overtime, I'm sure, throughout winter months, right? And, and we can't really divert from that, I don't think, I mean, that's about public safety, really, it really comes down to public safety.
And it's not just snow and ice, it's, you know, flooding events, and, uh, you know, events themselves, special events themselves, that, uh, you know, overtime.
Just the wind, like you said, that those trees were just, oh, something else. Okay, um, you know, that's, that's pretty much, I, I just want to thank, thank you, you know, it's, uh, you guys have been great, um, very responsive for me and my district, I know there are your limits, people don't understand your limits, but I understand your limits, and I know you do all you can, and have done all you can for me when I was the chair, and I know you will moving forward, so, thanks for the work you do, and, um.
No, good to hear, thanks.
Yep, got it, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Look for J.D. Breiders.
Who needs a new district?
Councilman.
He's really a good advocate for District Two, though, let me tell you. Maybe you have to run for mayor.
And three.
Anyway, um, sorry, um, I just want to thank you all for the work that you've been doing, and, um, talk a little bit about some of it, I know you have a lot of challenges with the budget coming up, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the projects you're working on District Two, and I want to get some update on the Stevens School Building, um, is the money still there for next year for Stevens School Building in this budget?
It is currently programmed, um, not for twenty-six, but twenty-seven, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you, nice and far away from my election, I mean, from, once I retire, okay. I'm sure that wasn't intentional, but anyway, so the Stevens School Building, the trolley trail.
The trolley trail, in my understanding, is a, is a mobility infrastructure project.
Yeah, but were you working on it at all, no?
Um, you know, they wanted to consult with me on some drainage details, uh, but beyond that.
Beyond that, okay, and then what about the, um, we have a playground in Sheridan that was, we took down Mutual Street Playground, the residents, some residents didn't want it, some residents do want it, is there any plans for that in the next year's budget? Do you know?
I don't recall seeing that in there, no.
And how about Bessie Miller's, um, the Elliott Building, the Herschel Field Building that they were trying to work with, they work with Open Field, they do work for Northview Heights and Crafton Heights, and they bring kids together for, in the immigrant community, and they were doing some work on that building so the kids could have a program there, do you know the status of that? Or the Stevens School Building, I just want to be honest, these are things, the Stevens School Building, Dunbar Field, Bessie Miller's thing, Steve, yeah, all those projects are things we've been working on for years, and I don't see them coming to fruition, definitely not now, I know that, but I'm wondering if they're in next year's budget, if there's any plans, and if not, who do I have to talk to, I mean, I know who I'm going to talk to if they're not, yeah. Pete, do you know any of those, status of any of those things in the budget?
Um, so, uh, Chip mentioned Thaddeus Stevens, that is in the, uh, twenty-twenty-seven budget, um, I don't see any of those fields, I think the trolley trail was supposed to get the, the last of the funding it needed in the twenty-twenty-five budget, so I'll have to dig into that right now to give you, um, a confirmed answer, because it's not in.
And the Sheridan Park Master Plan, where are we with that?
Uh, there, there's definitely money for that, um.
I know there's two million dollars that we put aside for that, and the pool is supposed to be getting redone, and so is the, um, and there was supposed to be money for the park.
Yeah, there's, um, there's money in twenty-twenty-six for Phase Two Design, uh, so, that's still ongoing, as far as I can tell.
That's for the pool, but the, the, the money for the master plan, where are we with that?
Um, yeah, Chip, do you have that, uh, ready?
Yeah, so the, so Phase Two does contemplate, um, several park assets, including the pool, uh, for design, so that is what's funded that is new for next year, uh, as well as construction for Phase One, which is still working its way through final permitting. Um, the master plan is not being actively worked on, we're just taking the components of the master plan that we can implement, and adding to or amending as needed the, the parts that we cannot implement.
So, I'm going to be honest, before this administration, I got a lot down in my district, and then a lot of things came to a screeching halt, and I'll say that I feel like part of my concern is that we pretend that we want to hear from the community, we pretend that we want to hear from the youth, we pretend we're leading for the twenty-fifty, and the reality is, there were more kids in that Sheridan Park Master Plan than there were in any other plans in the city of Pittsburgh, there, they had tons of kids participating, tons, those kids are now adults, and so, they're voting now, and I think they made their voices heard this last election, so what I'll say is that it's frustrating to me that we talk one way, and then we do something different, these kids are waiting for a plan, for Sheridan Park Master Plan to be done, the community's waiting for that plan to be done, we did our job on City Council, we implement, we, we participate in the process, we made sure the funding was there, we don't do implementation, I want the public to understand that, that's not our, that's not our responsibility, we don't implement the projects, we just allocate the funding, we advocate, allocate, and legislate, anything beyond that is, is up to the administration and to the departments, and so I just want to make sure people understand, we've done our part, and that, I'm going, I'm sure Kim's going to be a fierce fighter for those things, um, coming in, and I'm sure that she's going to have a better relationship with the new administration, and social party get some of those things done, but it's frustrating to me that they didn't happen with this current administration, because I think the community would love to have seen him taking interest in Sheridan and doing some of the things in the community that they really had hoped that would be done, so, for me, it's just, it's, it's sad all around, yeah, for everybody, but, but I'm glad it will be done eventually, but frustrated that it's not now, and I want to know where it was in the budget for next year.
I can tell you that there was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the twenty-five capital budget for the trolley trail, that is a dummy project, though, so we can definitely ask them.
There's also half a million dollars for Shaler Park that we, that I asked you to move, you know, and we did that, and that's on, and that's in Mount Washington on Shaler, do we know the status of that? Since the money's there?
I, I don't know, I'm also trying to find which, which budget year we moved that in, I do remember doing that, but in the twenty-twenty-three budget. I, I don't have, I couldn't give you an update on that.
Okay, I need, I need an update on that, please, Director, I do want to thank you, because I know that you're all doing the job you're, you're hired to do, and doing what you, you need to do, I understand that, I understand you don't report to council, you report to the administration, I understand that, but understand where my frustration is, because I do know the work that you have done, I do know the work you can do, and I know the great projects you've done in our district and across the city of Pittsburgh, so, I appreciate your work, I just want to see more of it completed in my district now, thank you. Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman.
Yeah, thanks, um, great, well, thank you, so I, you know, obviously, we've had a lot of discussion, touched on a lot of topics, um, yeah, thank you, it's, you know, I always enjoy working with this team, uh, it's, it's, it's a pleasure, I'm, it's a committee I'm happy to chair, um, even if it's a little rough in the winter. I definitely heard my residents about snow this past winter, um, you know, generally speaking, um, in the overarching conversation about budget, you know, I, I am, I, I am committed to ensuring that we increase revenues, uh, uh, you know, it's, it's my belief that we should, well, at, you know, at the very minimum, right, be putting an additional ten million dollars into vehicles, and also, longer term, uh, legislate a regular, at, at least, right, ten million dollars a year going, so that you all can plan, so that you know for sure, at, at the very least, that you're getting X, you know, uh, for vehicles, um, just as far as public works in general, you know, I think it's, um, you know, when we talk about budgets, and we talk about public safety, you know, and it's funny, because in the public's mind, I feel like when we talk about public safety, you know, police fire EMS, it's like, oh, yeah, of course, like, definitely, like, don't, no, 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 don't cut that, like, that is critical, that is like, it's public safety, but you guys are public safety in a very, very real way, right?
Thank you very much.
But, but in, in, and, and it's all the same stuff, right, it's, it's, um, uh, you know, weather events, it's big events, parades, whatever, right? Like, a, all of you, a lot, right alongside our public safety crews are out there making sure that those, those, those events are safe, um, that we get cleansed up, cleaned up from storms, um, um, just general upkeep, but, and then, but then in addition to that, right, in addition to that, you know, you, you, you have twenty-four-seven shifts in the winter, things like that, um, but then in addition, you're doing general maintenance and upkeep of our streets to make sure that our streets are safe, um, make sure that our facilities are safe, right, that the playgrounds that our kids are playing on are, are kept up, and, and, you know, that everything, the equipment is safe, the rec centers are safe, all of that kind of thing, right, so, um, I, um, for, for just kind of the general public awareness, I, I feel like public works, uh, you know, please, put them in with the police and the fire and the EMS, when you're like, we got to make sure that we, that we fund these things, um, uh, and there's so much, of course, that, that, that you all do well, right, in an incredible way, and, and, and that you have the funding for, at least we have had with ARPA money and all that kind of thing, with playgrounds, and, you know, and just incredible work on, on the, the nice-to-haves that make the city so, um, such a great place to live, right, like, these gorgeous parks that, that, you know, you all maintain, um, you know, rec center facilities, playgrounds, all that great stuff, um, that's what makes Pittsburgh a nice place to live, that's what makes it safe, you know, what makes it safe for us to kind of let our kids run around the neighborhood, which, at least in my neighborhood, people do, right, like, kids just run around, um, and, and I think that's, that's a nice thing. As far as, now, we've talked a lot, you know, and there's some things that we need to do better, right, the snow, we need the vehicles, right, we need to be able to do that better, and of course, the litter, and we've talked a lot about litter, um, one thing is, now, we talked about a litter coordinator at the post agenda, and that to me feels like, and that is, I assume, not in the budget, right? That feels like such an important position to me, that it is worth finding, and it is worth taking one position from somewhere, I don't know where yet, and making that position happen, and because that really is, you know, when you were talking about, Director, all the little things, you know, you know, talking with crews and seeing, you know, what is it, you know, making sure that there's, um, shovels and sweepers, and, and making sure that we're working with PennDOT and the, you know what I mean, in the county, and making sure that they're doing their litter cleanups, or at least alerting them, or figuring out the hotspots, so that maybe we can do a, a more regular cleanup by, by our divisions, right, on certain corridors, for example, um, and coordinating with our partners at Allegheny Cleanways and Friends of the River, and all these other folks who, and, and volunteer, you know, so really making sure that that litter coordination is working, and also, you know, in, in our kind of encampment situations, right, um, where, you know, you have this sort of places where it's like litter in the right-of-way, and whose responsibility is that, so I think that, that would be an incredibly worthwhile role, um, I know that, you know, that, great to hear about the, the giant, I mean, what was the jump from eighty-some clean and leans two years ago to like four hundred and some? Yeah, so that, that's, that's incredible work, and of course, would love to see that continue, um, I think litter is, um, and Councilman Charlin gave his, when he was inauguration speech, I know, uh, I know my husband was in the back cheering, he's like, yes, you know, it really makes a difference, like, it really does, you know? It, um, um, it, it's frustrating to people to see, to see that litter on the ground, and, and, and I know that you all want to do it, now, so in terms of budget, I'd be curious, I know that we talked about cans, um, and that it would be like a nine million dollar price tag, to just be like, everybody gets a can, everybody gets a can with a lid, right, like a clamshell type lid, um, Councilman Charlin and I talked about perhaps a pilot, maybe, like, was it maybe like in Arlington, I can't remember what neighborhood you mentioned, Knoxville?
I, I, I said, could be by order, like, whoever first come, first served.
Oh, okay, well, at any rate, I mean, I feel like Squirrel Hill would get it, if you do that, but, um.
Correct.
We feel that way too, southwest Pittsburgh here.
FYI, if you put that out there.
There's a reason that three of us are still out here.
But, um, at any rate, so that's something, and I think too, that we can also do some legislation, because there is a certain point, I mean, you know, I, I was at Walmart not long ago, and I saw clamshell can, I mean, I'm sure they're not the best, right, but they were on, they were on sale for thirty bucks, you know, so I think that asking our, our, our homeowners and our landlords to, to provide proper receptacles, right, for, for their home, I think, is probably something that we, we should, we should talk about seriously, um, I don't think, so just in terms of questions, it, so I did, I had that too about the street sweepers, because it is with the park, I mean, that's what we hear, it's, and it's all about the parking, it's never like, my street didn't get swept, and actually, when there is a street that needs done, that seems to, whether it's on a route or not, that seems to happen pretty quickly, like, if, you know, I put in a call, like, hey, could you, you know, the leaves on this one street, it seems like it gets done fairly quickly, could we, like, reduce it to just once a month?
It is, it is once a month.
Oh, it's once a month now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, maybe there's...
We can always paper post if, you know, if you have a request for a street to be swept.
Yeah, I mean, it may just be, because I know that is for, I mean, I can't, I'm gonna speak for all members, but that is the frustration. It's never like, oh, my street is dirty. That's not the, that's not the complaint. The complaint is like, I moved my car and, or, or I got a ticket, which, that seems not to happen as much. Like, because they follow the street sweeper, right? Like Parking Authority follows the sweeper.
Correct.
Right, right. So I know I have one guy, I don't remember his name, shout out to him. He, he is on that street sweep. He is like watching every month. I always get a report when it didn't come, so anyway.
That's probably my husband bothering you.
I don't know. Oh, one thing I wanted to ask, these are just little things, I guess I could, but with domie and paving, my understanding is that there was a position where someone retired that was in paving. Is that something that you all are looking to fill or domie is looking to, you know what I mean? So there's like a paving crew, but that's a domie thing, but then there was someone maybe who left, but it was a DPW position?
Yeah, that's a longstanding, previous director piece. They were titled laborer. They didn't do any laboring. They never plowed a street. They were doing pavement inspection.
Right.
They were in our budget, and they, we just found out they retired when, this summer.
Yes.
And, you know, we've since going through the hiring process. Oh, sorry. And, yeah, I, I, I can't say why that was that way. If I'd, if we'd have known, as I was saying with Domie, if we'd have known, we would have figured out how to transfer this. I'm not sure how this person was getting the proper support from human resources, being that they were located in our budget, and yet they were, had employees being signed off by W management. So a longstanding thing that...
Yeah. Well, okay, whatever it is, just that the job can, I mean, I don't know what the position, but we'll talk about it.
They have other, yeah, I mean, what they need is a paving inspector. They also have several of those in their budget currently.
Okay.
So much like all of us.
Just ask real quick, do you mind? What, what do they pay for an inspector?
The paving inspector?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm curious. Because I, I'll tell you a story while.
So that's my understanding. You know, they do have staff that does that. It is, it is important to the paving program.
Yeah.
So I certainly acknowledge that. You know, again, I wish they would have come to me when they knew. I wish, I wish we would have known so we could have taken proactive choices, but the way the HR system is broken down, they just, we never identified that this person was detailed to the asphalt team for these, since domie was formed.
Okay, okay. Well, whatever the case, that's something, you know, that we can maybe figure out, just to make sure. At any rate, okay, so we can, we can talk about that one later. Funding, I wanted to ask about funding, and again, this is, and I know that it, I don't believe it's in the budget, funding for Allegheny, like, for Allegheny Cleanways and other partners, I'll say that, you know, I'm sure anything has to be RFP'd, but like, to do that support, do we have funding for that?
No.
No, I didn't think so.
We don't. That's, previously, I believe they were funded out of the Community Development Block Grant Program, and I'm sure there are federal regulatory reasons why that couldn't continue. But they are a wonderful partner. We would love to be supportive of that action. You know, tell us where to find it.
Right, that's, right. So that's something, that's, well, when we're talking about the budget, that's, that's for us to do, but it feels like that's something that's important. Okay, we talked about the utilities, and you, just, just, just shy of, of $5 million. So for, for folks who came in late, there, there is a concern about facilities, maintenance, roofs, and HVAC. And the department feels that, that, you know, we're about 4.7 million shy of what is needed to, to maintain these facilities, and of course, not maintaining them means more expensive repairs. So it's just something to keep in mind. I did want to ask, and this might be a Chip question, so like, I'm curious about like, and you, and you did actually mention kind of taking a closer look at our contractors. When we do have, because that's one thing that I know is frustrating, right, is that you have a project, whether it be a rec, I know there's one in my district where it's like a rec center renovation or whatever it is, and the contractor is not necess, is not like meeting the expectations or is slow, or there's some kind of, you know, just like, just like when you're, you're working on your house and you hire somebody and they just like disappear for two weeks and you kind of, but I mean, it happens, you know, and, and what are you, what are you gonna do, right? So is there... Like, you know, as the city, is there a way for us to build, or, or maybe we do already, like, build in timelines where we pay a premium or get a credit or whatever, like, if work isn't done, if like, if like, you know, deadlines aren't met sort of throughout the course of the project? I'm just kind of curious about that.
Yeah, so I can, I can speak to that. It's a good question, and I can speak to that in some greater detail. I guess sort of on that note, I will say this is a, this work project, capital project management, probably more than anything else, is, is like exhibit A for the details. And so both the vendor performance review and standardizing our specifications are aimed at making sure that we are very detail-oriented and specific, that we remove ambiguity in terms of knowns and unknowns, in terms, knowns and unknowns on the side of the project and the technical and material specifications, but also the administrative processes that contractors need to follow to comply and, and be paid. So, you know, I would say with vendor performance, you know, we, something that we hear a lot from law and procurement, and we certainly understand and agree that, you know, one bad experience on a project doesn't necessarily mean that you can ever use that contractor again. And we want to give contractors feedback in a methodical way, in a meaningful way where they can know in real time what we are, what we deem not satisfactory, but also, you know, give them the opportunity to improve upon that. So what we're trying to do is set our standard to be clear about our expectations upfront, but also document progress during projects, then post-mortem after projects, and disseminate that information in a clear and fair and transparent way, so that we can give, certainly give praise for contractors that perform well and that we want to encourage and, and see more on, in, in more of our bids, but also give opportunities for corrections in specific areas. And then also give us, you know, when necessary, the ammunition, so to speak, to disqualify a contractor on a future bid if, if they shun a pattern of being a poor performer. I shall pause on that first if you, if you want to opine or add any more to that. I'm kind of gonna go into more details if you want, Councilwoman. But it's about, it's mostly about documenting history and being, being detail-oriented.
Yeah, those are the best things that we can do. And so one of the things that I, I think that I've liked about the learning from the last couple of years that I've had, I think Chip exemplifies, and Bill, and Dawn, and Chuck, and Marcel as well, is that just because a situation is not to our satisfaction, doesn't mean we stop looking at ourselves to see what we can do better, whether it is, and, and we have to be strategic with that, because we have a finite amount of time, right? So when we say that we want to create learning around vendor performance review and standard specifications, it's with a goal in mind that we are going to get more responsive contractors that we can hold accountable to schedules. Because we've learned those lessons on projects, like the 4th Division Councilmen, where we might have been delayed otherwise because we went back and we looked at it. And this is why we go and we look at vehicle maintenance, because it is a similar type of relationship, which is why I also make the suggestion that I would love to see across the city, in all departments, a procedure to follow improvements that was 100 or 1,000 small little steps and little improvements thoughtfully done, as opposed to one big improvement. Because a lot of times, and I'm sure Dawn can opine on this, especially myself and Chip, we are reliant on other departments for certain specific services, and we need them to meet us. We are a customer, and we need them to understand the importance to us and not fight us on those changes, but meet us with their own improvement. And sometimes we don't see that. And that's just me being frank and honest here at the table. And so I ask the question, we get the concern that, you know, hey, the, we have to tighten the belt, we're ready, we're, we went into this budget process tightening the belt. The belt has been tightened. You can't separate for our work, you can't separate the machine from the person. The city as an organization needs to pull ore together on that issue. And this is how we do it, everybody taking their little bit of peace that this is our work and making it a little bit better. We are thoughtful on that, because again, we have finite time. I would love to, you know, do a program to improve so-and-ice for residents. But we need to be thoughtful about where we make that improvement, how and why, because it can lead to the next little thing that is easy to accomplish. That's me speaking broadly, I think specifically to what Chip has raised. Those are the natural things that our, that our project managers have identified. Yes, do we get frustrated that the 4th Division is delayed or past deadline? Absolutely. Same thing with Oliver Bathhouse. Absolutely. We don't accept that as our standard practice going forward. We take those lessons and we apply them to the next thing, which is what has led us to do vendor performance reviews, which has led us to do, making sure we have great standards and specifications. So we believe if we do that work correctly, we are both gonna get more responsive contractors, but new contractors that come to work for the city that are starting out, we're also gonna be able to teach them how to be more effective at their job as well.
Just, the only sentence I'm gonna add to that, being a former project manager, when you're in the project, you, you have very little weight behind you, because when you're in the contract, you're in the contract, right? So when we talk about these vendor performance, that's always for tomorrow. But when you're in the project, the contracting is set up, you know, I, I don't know if it's set up, if what the right phrase is, but there's nothing, there's nothing allowing us to get a little tough, right, as a project manager. There's nothing, you know, quite frankly, the only option is not paying them, and that's not actually an option, right? So we have nothing really as a project manager in our arsenal to back us up, right, to say, I don't like this performance, this is going to happen if something doesn't change. That's what we can't say when we're in the midst of it, because there's nothing to back that statement up.
Well, that's what I'm asking. I mean, is there a way in the contract itself, right, to put those guard, like, you know, if this isn't met? And I don't know, maybe there's not. I mean, I know that it's...
I'm smarter people than me, but...
Well, it's, it's the whole system, right? So it's not just the contract. And if you're gonna look at the large-scale contracts that we bid out to public bid, it's also making sure that we get a schedule of values from every bidder, that we can compare against each other to make sure that they've covering costs, or that they're viewing the set of construction documents in the bid package in the same way, instead of just saying, well, this is the lowest cost and this is what it is. We've actually had success in saying to vendors this go-around because of improvement that Chip and his team have made and working with the procurement office, to reject a bidder as, you know, to ask them to revise and sharpen their pencil on this. And they themselves coming to the table realizing that, oh, it was actually off by an order of magnitude of like a million dollars. It would have been a terrible situation for the city to have been if we never asked them that question to say, did you get this number right? Because everybody else is saying it's, it's a million more than that. And, you know, they, they proactively remove themselves from the conversation, because that's their risk as well. So the more detail-oriented we can be, and the more we can work with them directly in real time when we're dissatisfied, that is the, that is the way to get more responsive work done.
And, and oftentimes, the delays are doing that due diligence and fight. Like, there were times, and I've told you many times on the 4th Division, where we're fighting a change order, right? Takes time. Like, we're, we're not accepting this as it stands, we gotta go back and forth, and those are delays, right? So, you know, it could be anything, really.
I think, oh...
I was just gonna say, bids change, they find a mine shaft, price goes up, an old foundation under there.
They found a whole building underground.
Everything that could go wrong, that went wrong. So I feel like we're in the clear now, but until I see trucks.
But I think, too, also just, and this is something I've had to kind of, you know, adjust for myself, is just that in, you know, coming from the private sector to government, is there, you know, and it's like every department is stretched incredibly thin, right? Because we're not, we're not like a big Fortune 500 company where it's like, oh, man, we're getting overloaded, let's just hire a bunch more people and just bring on some new people. We can't do that. Like, like, you can't, that's like opening up your budget and there's this whole trans, so it's like the need for, the need for government transparency, because it is taxpayer dollars, is actually what slows government down in a very real way, that it is not slowed down in a, you know, in, in the private sector. But, but yeah, that's always the thing, is like the, the, the slow pace of even, even just emails, right? Like, I mean, and I see it myself, right? Like, my own inbox, like, I, I am now at the point where sometimes I don't get to an email for a week, and that is like unheard, I mean, before it'd be like, are you, is everything okay? Like, that was, that's not how things work kind of in the, in the, in the real world in the private sector, right? But it is here, because you just don't have the capacity to do all the work because of the budget constraints. But anyway, I don't know, I, I just, but, but I, I do want to thank you. I, I can't underscore enough how much I appreciate the work that you all do in Public Works, and, you know, and, and it's not free, right? I think the public sometimes feels like it's, you know, it's like the, the city doesn't happen for free. And that's, you know, we talk about revenues, we talk about taxes, it's just like everything else, right? Like, your Netflix account isn't free, your coffee in the morning isn't free, all these things. And I know that, that costs are going up so much for everybody all around, but they're also going up for us. And, you know, and, and I, I know that the belts have been tightened and, and, and I, I don't know, I, I personally worry about the, the conversation about tightening belts versus getting the funding that we need to, to provide the services that we need, that we need to provide for our city, because those, that's what keeps our city both safe and also beautiful and livable and all those great things that make Pittsburgh so nice. Anyway, anything else from members? Anyone else? Last words?
Yeah, let me just say, Southwest Pittsburgh's on that side of the table, too.
Stay the night.
I know, I know. Two in District Two.
They found a ranch.
Crane Avenue.
Crane Avenue.
District.
How'd you know?
So three in District Two and one in Four.
Eden Parkside.
That's where all the people who know what's going on in the city choose to live, District Two.
All right, well...
Thank you, thank you.
Going once, going twice. Okay, if there are no further questions, can I get a motion to recess? Okay. Okay?